Most recently, he's been transferred over to a ladder truck and so he's gone volunteering his time to go out and learn some high-rise type techniques that are specific to job tasks. Also, he's volunteered to inspect our ladders. Traditionally, that's something we paid another company to come in and do is inspect our ground ladders on all of our trucks. And we had him and another individual trained. They volunteered to take that training. So now they inspect those ladders every year. Saves us thousands of dollars a year. In addition to that, he's been one of the ones that spearheads the renovation of some of our fire stations specifically Central where he works. If you haven't been down to Central in a while, I'd urge you to come down and take a look. They've renovated that station, gone room by room. We've provided the materials and through leadership such as provided by CAGA where they have renovated that station. It looks really nice. And I think Director Barber wanted to add a few words.
You know, this morning I got to spend some time with the captain and we were talking and what really noted, he's the son of a career Mobile firefighter from Mobile with, I believe, 26 years of service that he served in.
Thirty-four.
Thirty-four. And so 21 years of service himself to the Mobile Fire Department, City of Mobile. But what really struck me as we were listening to him talk about his job was his enthusiasm for the job. And he's just incredibly enthusiastic. You would think you're talking to a rookie firefighter that just got here. But he is just as comfortable picking up a paintbrush as he is dragging a hose into a burning building. Just absolutely loves what he does. I bring that up for a reason. Because a fire service captain is the single most important rank in the fire department that has a direct impact on the morale and discipline of the firefighters. And you can see above me to your left are his team that were here. And even though I haven't been around his team, I could tell by his enthusiasm that that is a higher performance team. And so I think that he's a great credit to the City of Mobile. Bill will definitely be proud of this type of enthusiasm to serve the citizens. And so congratulations, Captain, for a job well done.
Thank you.
We'll defer in a few moments at some point to Councilman Richardson to talk about the moon pie drop. I will say this, though, from my perspective, it was very successful. Well organized, great weather, and a good turnout. So thank everybody that had something to do with it and thank for those who attended because I hope you enjoyed yourself because I did. Today, on today's days, there's a resolution about Airbus having to do the national implications of the tariff. I'm grateful that the city council is going to weigh in on this issue to support Airbus. The Airbus story just continues, continues better. They were recognized as the leading producer of commercial aircraft in the world for last year. That's a big deal, really big deal. And I think that just bodes well for the future of Airbus and the City of Mobile. And so we look forward to continuing that relationship. After this meeting, which is going to end at 12 o'clock, for those who tend to be long-winded and also I cut my brief short and my remarks short, we are rolling out, having a ribbon-cutting ceremony for a new police boat. I don't know how many of you knew that we even had a police boat, but it's very important with the, every time the cruise ship comes in, you see the boat circling out there in the harbor around the ship and it all has to do with Homeland Security. The boat was purchased, and we'll tell this in the press conference here when we have that unveiling, but it was purchased from Homeland Security. So tremendously grateful that we applied for the grant and got the grant and now we have a brand-new 34-foot police boat. Last night's Lending Tree boat, you know, we were very fortunate that that was the last bowl game leading up to the championship game. Having it on Monday night was a coveted spot from a media perspective, although on Monday night, when a lot of Mobileans may be aren't inclined to go to ballgames, but it from the broader perspective of how it played into all the bowl games, it was the only football game on TV last, last night. So we're really grateful for the teams that were here and I know they had a good time. And I'll share two things, William. One was that in meeting with individuals, I probably met half a dozen individuals that specifically wanted to tell me they'd never been to Mobile and how friendly and how nice and how well organized. Now, everybody they came in contact with was trying to help make sure they had a good time. There's nothing that we can do that sells better than the word of mouth of somebody good experienced here. The other thing that really kind of caught my attention is so often we compare ourselves to other cities, like how are we doing compared to so-and-so? And a lot of times, the city of Charleston is mentioned because of how successful they've been in, in so many different areas, tourism being one of them, quality of life being another. But this gentleman that was with Lending Tree, he was one of the corporate executives. He made a comment that he was from Charleston. And he said, "Mayor, I had never really been in your city, but the last couple of days I've been taking tours and riding around people." And he said, "I can promise you, the City of Mobile has more potential than Charleston. You've just got to pull it out." He said, "You've just got to, you know, bring it to a head." Which, you know, I think that so often we think that we can't be something, but here was a guy that from the outside and said, "You can be better than they are." And so that's where we headed. And that's where we've been headed for several years. And so just anyway, it's reassuring to hear comments made like that. So anyway, thank everybody for being here. Look forward to seeing you at the boat.
Not the casino boat.
Okay, adoption of the agenda.
Probably moved in second discussion. If not all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Appeals. We have requests for a waiver of the noise ordinance on January 11th from 8:30 a.m. until 2:00 p.m. in Cathedral Square.
So moved.
Second.
Probably moved in second in the discussion. If not all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Public hearings today. It's a public hearing. Carrying on property located at 4213 Halls Mill Road and 4180 Alden Drive, east side of Halls Mill Road, 165 feet north Alden Drive, extending to the north side of Alden Drive, 270 feet east of McCurry Lane, from B3 and I1 to I1.
Is there anyone here that would like to speak during this particular public hearing? If not, the public units closed.
Public hearing to declare the structures at 1408 St. Stevens Road, 53 South Georgia Avenue, 459 Michigan Avenue, 1355 South Cloverleaf Circle, 908 Fairmont Street, 12, fix for securing the structures at 1269 Glennon Avenue, 2960 McVeigh, 1555 Midway Avenue, and 2005 Tucker Street.
Is there anyone here that would like to speak relative to any of these public hearings? Yes, sir. If you could come on down and hear from you.
My name is Milton Mills. I live at 7441 Carson Road South, 9366955. In reference to 908 Fairmont Street.
What city is that?
Sir?
What city is that?
Carson Road South. I'm referring to 908 Fairmont Street.
But what is your mailing address?
Seventy-four forty-one Carson Road South.
Yes, sir.
Three six six nine five.
There we go. Thank you. Yes, sir, you can.
I would like for the fire department to use that as a training facility at 908 Fairmont Street if that's possible.
We've got our public safety director sitting here. The fire chief is left. Mr. Doffenbach, any commentary you'd like to offer relative to that particular request?
Hard to hear, I'm sorry.
Mr. Doffenbach is coming up behind you. And he's heard your request and offering a commentary you would want to.
Just want to let the city council know that this has happened before as a training exercise. Municipal enforcement usually steps back and coordinate, the property owner coordinates with the police, the fire department. There's a criteria that has to be met and I don't have the knowledge of what that criteria is. You know, the common sense things, is it too close to another structure? And what's going to happen with the debris afterwards? We just want to make sure that after the fire occurs, for the training exercise, that the remaining debris is removed. And once all that's coordinated, municipal enforcement's happy to go forward with what he's proposing if the fire department is available to do that.
Mr. Public Safety Director?
Mr. Doffenbach is correct. It's the debris removal that has to be issued, but I'll be glad to put touch with the fire department and we'll be glad to work those details out with you.
Yes, sir. Thank you for coming down today. Yes, sir.
Yes, my name is Glenn Thornton. I live at 800 South Broad Street, Mobile, Alabama, 36603. And giving honor to all the council members and the mayor and all those in the government. I'm here to represent my nieces and nephews and the property is in question is at 13155 South Cloverleaf. And they're saying it's a nuisance, but I have pictures of the house and it really just needs some repair and I want to help them with it. And if I can get the city council to grant us more time to take care of necessary needs to bring it up, but I have pictures of it if y'all want to see it. I personally think the house is too good to be talking about tearing it down because I have a sister-in-law that really need to be in that particular house. And she have a little son that he need be going to Craighead School right by it there, right by Craighead where Cloverleaf, that's where it's at. So I appreciate if there's anything y'all can do to help us out on that.
About how much, Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
Good morning. About how much time would you need before y'all even pull a permit?
Yeah. If you can give us three months to get started, I mean, I believe three months probably all we probably need, if I get three months.
Could you all pull a permit before three months?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, we should be able to pull for about three months, yes.
Thank you.
What's the location again, Mr. President?
This is on Cloverleaf.
1355.
Yeah, 1355.
Mr. David, if he goes ahead and pulls a permit this week, I mean, should we just table this to a date or?
Yes, in 90 days would be great. That would be the maximum. Sixty days.
So table this for 60 days? Okay. Table this for 60 days. If you all can just go ahead and just pull a permit, I know you said probably just take three months to go ahead and get started, but just go ahead and pull a permit and just knock this off our agenda.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Council. Appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Good morning.
With Thomas and Gloria Blakely. We're here at 1301 Ridge Wood Drive, Mobile, Alabama, 36608. We're here on the property for 1269 Glennon Avenue. We're here to object to the fixing of the cost to secure it. We are not legal title holders right now. We bought it at the tax sale. And we were told we had three years before title would transfer to us. We are investing in that area right now. We have one house and a lot right next to the same house. We were going to propose to tear the house down, but we told we couldn't do anything until the passes to us. So we was trying to see if anything we can do about lowering that cost on them costs that they were trying to lay down.
Mr., so you're coming today seeking how you might lessen the cost?
Right. Because the house is only worth $2,000 itself. We planned on tearing it down for the lot. I got a house that we done renovated right next to it and we're going to use that as a land.
Mr. Doffenbach?
We got pictures of it, you know.
If you, I don't, I'm not disputing what you all would want to do. I just want to hear from Mr. Doffenbach relative to their request.
Yes, this is a fixing cost resolution for securing the structure. At this point, we did notify the owner of record. We did file a list of tenants and the property was posted. Now, when you took possession of the property through tax certificate or is it a tax deed?
I guess the certificate won't have anything.
The notification process that we have when we record the list of tenants and post the property, for those people that come in and purchase an interest in the property during the process, that is their notification. So they should have, through due diligence, figured out that the city was in this process of securing the property and contacted us. So this was, you know, it was a process.
Well, I did contact.
And the work has been done.
What's the address?
1269 Glennon.
Glennon?
Proposed cost, $4,000. $4,000, that's to secure it. And if you look at those pictures of in the mail, mail, the way proposed, way to secure it, this house is not secured the way you said that they wanted it done. And I had asked for some time to do it because I was mostly out of town and I've been doing most of the work myself. And if you look at the house, the house, the structure, the seals are termite, termite damages on it. That's what we, she and I decided we going to tear it down once we secure your title to it, which we don't have. It's just a lien holder, I guess, right now.
Right. You've gotten an interest in it through a tax sale?
Yeah, through state, Alabama.
But has the three years gone by where you all have?
This year would be the third year.
But the city is already, Mr. Doffenbach, the city has already expended these resources?
Yes.
Well, what I would suggest you all do, you're in a precarious situation, but the gentleman you need to speak with is right behind you. His name is David Doffenbach. Get with Mr. Doffenbach and he'll be able to work this. I don't know exactly what he'll be able to do, but if it can be done, he's the man that can do it, Mr. David Doffenbach. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to participate, speak on any of these public hearings? If not, the public units are closed.
Presentation of petitions and other communications to the council, Maxine Graham.
Mr. Tower, can you get Mr. Doffenbach back in here for a second, please? If you don't mind, it's now the directive. Just make sure you put that disclaimer on the internet.
Could you was a question?
I just want, I don't want any trouble at the river. Good morning.
My name is Maxine Graham and my house is at Selmo Two Plum Street. That's the bottom.
Yes, ma'am.
And the zip code is 36603. And I was at home and Ms. Sheila called me and told me, Mr. Jackson, say I can't get a permit to start working on the house still to them tearing it down. And I do have a permit right here.
Yes, ma'am.
Have my permit. So I just want to know would it be okay for me to go on and work on it or what y'all going to do?
Mr. Doffenbach is right, is right here. We discussed your case in pre-council, Ms. Graham, and I know I've talked with you and texted with you and I'm happy to see you passed here with you, Dr. McQueen, Bishop of Avenue. Mr. Doffenbach, if you could, let Ms. Graham know how we might be able to move forward.
Sure. Just to the council know that, yes, a renovation permit has been issued to Ms. Graham. You have it in your hand. She can go forward and start repair work at any time. Municipal enforcement is aware of it and we're going to step back and allow you to repair your houses.
Yes, thank you.
Wonderful.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Happy New Year.
Is there a timeline that she needs to be aware of?
Yes, it's on the permit, so it's printed on the permit.
Great, thank you.
She has, the expiration date is on the permit.
Okay.
Anybody aware of it?
April the 7th.
Yes, that's correct.
Mr. David, Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
Typically, how long is that time limit on the permit? Is it six months, a year?
It's my understanding when a building permit or a repair permit is issued, it's a standard six months period. However, in this case, since it's part of a nuisance abatement action, when we start our files, we put a hold on the permit. So no permits would be issued unless there's consultation. In this case, we have limited it to 60 days because of the 120-day timeframe that we have. Now, we say, is that reasonable? And I think yes, because if she begins work after the 60 days, the permit would automatically be extended. So that there's no additional cost. She'll just need to contact the building permit department and request an extension as long as there's repair work commencing.
So does someone come out and inspect to make sure that there's work and then she applies for the extension?
If she requests an inspection or a site visit from the building inspectors, yes. But otherwise, she would have to request the extension.
Right, okay.
And Ms. Graham, if you have any other questions, please don't hesitate to reach out and we'll get you connected again with Mr. Doffenbach.
Yes, sir.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you all for coming down.
Ordinance is held over 02045. Ordinance to terminate all city services within the police jurisdiction to repeal certain, oh, I'm sorry, I forgot, I have one more person signed in. Velma Dell Jackson regarding Resolution 61167. This is the resolution on the aerospace parts.
Velma Dell Jackson, 1552 J Drive, Mobile, Alabama, 36605. I first came here when Airbus was bidding for the tanker contract. I gave a message that you should start a prayer meeting and if you didn't, you would not win the bid. You didn't start the prayer meeting and you did not get the contract. That was the only reason. Then I gave a message to the mayor stating that if he didn't start the prayer meeting, he would not be reelected. He didn't start the prayer meeting, so he was not reelected. I came today with a third message. If you want to continue success with Airbus, you must start the prayer meeting on Wednesdays at 12 noon inside Government Plaza. You only have to show up. God will do the rest. Just one of you need to show up tomorrow. What have you got to choose? Our only hope is Jesus. One nation under God. That's it.
All right. Questions? Well, I guess I would, if you don't mind. If I'm in my office here in Government Plaza, can I just pray in my office? Is there a specific space or can I pray in my office?
No, it has to be a city prayer outside in the city.
Where?
What you call this place outside? It's a city prayer. You got to call it city to prayer.
Oh, okay. Yes, ma'am.
Got to be downstairs.
Yes, ma'am. Well, what about the prayer meetings on Wednesday evenings at 6 o'clock all over the city? Those don't count?
No, they don't count.
Because they're praying at 6 o'clock. My church is open and hundreds of churches open at 6 o'clock to pray.
Well, that's what the Lord says. He want, he want the city to come to prayer. We are nation of God and we are ignoring that and we got to bring it back.
Yes, ma'am.
We think God is not real, but he is real.
Oh, I believe it.
And he's going to make himself known right here in Government Plaza once one of y'all show up.
Now, do you plan on coming tomorrow?
Yeah, I'll be here.
That's wonderful.
Will you be here?
I'm going to try my best, but if I'm not here, I will be praying.
That won't count.
It'll, I believe it'll count, Ms. Jackson. I'm sorry. I believe it'll count.
You got to be here.
Yes, ma'am.
What you got to lose? Let's see what happens. Just try it.
Yes, ma'am.
Third try.
Thank you.
God bless you. Happy New Year.
Ordinance is held over 02045. Ordinance to terminate all city services within the police jurisdiction to repeal certain business license taxes and to provide for an orderly transition.
Move to layover to February 11th.
Motion to second, any discussion? Absentee in discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
64046, rezoned property located at 1624 Spring Avenue from R1 to B2.
So moved. Probably moved in second, any discussion? All, absentee in discussion, all in favor? Aye, opposed? Passes.
Consent resolutions held over 371060. Recommend approval to the ABC Board for issuance of a retail beer, table wine, off-premise only license for Spring Hill Food Mart on Spring Hill Avenue. 601167, resolution to, oh, we're, okay, we're amending.
So moved. Probably moved to second, any discussion? All in favor? Aye, opposed?
601167, resolution to support, in support of continued aerospace manufacturing growth in Mobile and to urge the president to continue not applying tariffs on imported aerospace components and assemblies from Europe.
So moved.
Second.
Probably moved to second, any discussion?
Yes, Mr. President.
Mr. Williams?
I'd like to offer an amendment, please.
Yes, sir.
And it would be that we simply replace the last whereas in this resolution with recognition that what we are doing is looking inward to Mobile and its operations. And the new whereas would be to simply read, whereas the president's existing trade policy regarding imported aircraft components and assemblies used in Mobile has resulted in continued employment growth in the City of Mobile. And any change in that policy would result in new tariffs on imported aircraft components and assemblies from Europe which are used in mobile places at risk this significant industrial employment growth in the City of Mobile. That's the end of the amendment.
Second.
Thank you.
The proper, amendment has been offered, it's been properly second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Now we'll go back to the item as amended, any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed?
CIP resolutions held over 211158 and 115150 are authorizing contract with Jay Hunt Enterprises General Contractors for site amenities improvements at Tremere Park and Byron Randall Park.
So moved.
Second.
Probably moved in second, any discussion?
Yes, Mr. President.
Mr. Vice President?
Yeah, these two parks are located in the boundaries of District 3. One of the popular parts are very popular parts in the district and very well-used between football and baseball. The first park that we are mentioning in the CIP is going to be the park and Tremere Park has been a part that has been neglected over the years because it doesn't qualify for CBDG money. And so therefore, very, very little city resources went into that park and many, like other parks, the county has not really had invested into this particular area either, into this particular park. So I'm so glad that we have, the council have passed the CIP, the extra sales tax, the extra one cent sales tax to invest into two parts that has been neglected over the years. And in this particular park, Tremere, we're going to be looking at bleachers, picnic tables, water fountain, and et cetera. Then this park that we have is Bon Harbor, Randall Park, which is local to Duval Street. And again, this park has also been neglected over the years and we're looking to put into $187,000 of improvements at this park, which will also include like a basketball, re-analyze the basketball court there and also do some drainage projects also at that park. Again, Tremere Park will have $185,000 of improvements going into it. And the Duval Street Park will have $187,000 improvements going into it. And again, this is all coming from CIP, the extra one cent sales tax. And the citizens in the communities and also the different baseball groups and basketball groups and football groups will be happy to see these improvements that's coming into the area.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Any response?
Resolutions held over zero eight one one six zero. Approved purchase order for two Rough Moors. Zero eight eleven sixty-one. Approved purchase order for the purchase of Redex Recreation Management Software. Zero eight eleven sixty-sixty-two. Approved purchase order for tandem axle dump truck for the motor pool. Zero eight eleven sixty-three. Approved item-based bids for tennis court repair and communication headsets. Zero nine eleven sixty-four. Appropriate monies from the Alabama Municipal Trust twenty nineteen for various capital projects. Zero nine eleven sixty-five. Reallocate money, manage capital, project city share economic development, send in two priority projects, districts one through seven, and miscellaneous fee waivers. Twenty-one eleven sixty-six. Authorized contract with Republic Services of Mobile for down garbage compactor service.
So moved.
Second. Probably moved to second. Any discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Any response?
Orders is being introduced for the first time. Sixty-four zero zero one.
This order will be laid over for one week by council rules.
Consent resolutions being introduced forty-eight zero one through forty-zero one six.
Motion to suspend the rule for immediate consideration for consent resolution forty-eight-zero-zero-one through forty-zero-one-six.
Second. Probably moved to second. Any discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Okay, I'll take zero zero four separately. Forty-zero-zero-one, zero zero-two, zero zero-three, and zero zero-five are declaring the structures at fourteen oh eight Saint Stevens Road, fifty-three South Georgia Avenue, four fifty-nine Michigan Avenue, and nine oh eight Vermont Street. Public nuisances and ordering them demolished. Forty-zero-zero-six, zero zero-seven, and zero one five, and zero one six-six fixing the costs for securing structures at twelve sixty-nine Glenon Avenue, twenty-nine sixty McVoy Drive, fifteen fifty-five Midway Avenue, and twenty-oh-five Tucker Street. Sixty-zero-zero-eight. Approval award a special bonus to firefighter of the month, Captain Stephen McEvoy.
So moved.
Probably moved to second. Any discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Any response?
Forty-zero-zero-four. Declare the structure at ten fifty-five South Globally Circle. Public nuisance and order it demolished.
To layoff assisted aides?
Second.
Probably moved to second. Any discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Any passes?
CIP.
I must lay it over, rather.
CIP resolutions being introduced zero eight zero zero nine.
By council rule, this resolution will be laid over for one week.
Resolutions being introduced for the first time. Zero eight zero one zero through thirty-five-zero-one-three.
By council rule, this resolution will be laid over for one week.
Call for public hearing. Forty-one zero one-one. Call for public hearing to rezone property located at six oh five Texas Place, northeast corner of Texas Place and Texas Street, extending to the east terminus of Texas Place from R one to B two, scheduled February fourth.
So moved.
Probably moved to second. Is there any discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Public hearing is called.
Announcements.
Mr. Richardson?
All righty, okay. I would like to... Let me my announcement to the New Year's Eve Moon Pie Drop. I would like to start off by thanking Ms. Carol Hunter and Keisha Davis along with the Events Mobile team for steering the New Year's Eve Moon Pie Drop to a tremendously successful conclusion. It was an outstanding night. Like to especially thank Ms. Simpson and along with the common John Williams for participating in this grand event. Ms. Simpson and I cut the world's largest edible moon pie, and we had thousands of people standing there witnessing this. And Ms. Simpson, they were asking me to make a request to Chattanooga Moon Pie Factory to please make a bigger moon pie. Because we didn't serve all of those people that were there. And they were just bent out of shape when they couldn't get a slice. And I had people phoning me up, saying, "Just grab me a slice." We ran. It was the world's largest moon pie, but it was not large enough for the group that we had assembled there to eat a piece of the moon pie. That went extremely well. And then we had a group, a band waiting, and we hit the streets to have to have the moon pie. And Ms. Simpson and I, and Ms. Simpson's wife Jean, led us. We got in front. John was with us. And then we had a grand march with our umbrellas up, and we marched all the way around to the main stage. When we got on that stage, I knew we were going to break any records that we have ever had before. Phenomenal. Ms. Simpson and I do this every year, and John is with us. We're going to stage, and we thank everybody for coming and making our announcements and all of that. And we have a pretty good crowd over there. This year we're standing room only at nine thirty. As far as I can see in any direction, they were standing there at nine thirty. I knew then we were in for a grand night. And I can say one of the major contributors was that the weather was great. It was great. Weather wasn't too cold. We didn't have no wind blowing, no rain, no fog. It was just a great night for that event. We had no disorder mentioned. Everybody was orderly. Ball House was full, full occupancy. The Riverview Plaza was full occupancy. The Holiday Inn was full occupancy. The Admiral was full. My point is, one of the reasons we wanted to put this event on was to be an engine for a period of time that normally nothing is going on. And we fill up the hotels. We fill up the restaurants. I took my microphone out, and we just went from place to place. We couldn't get in some. And the line was so long in others. It was... This event trying to get food, it was blocked out. It was all just people everywhere. So next year, Ms. Simpson, next year, the New Year's Eve is going to be on Thursday night. We have this grand opportunity to keep people in Mobile until Sunday. We got to figure out what we need to do. They're going to be here. You can ask Ms. Simpson. We had a lady up the stairs screaming, hollering from Southern Calif... Southern California. And she didn't come to Mobile to hear Collective Soul. She wanted to be standing in place when the moon pie dropped. She wanted to be in position at midnight to watch that moon pie come down. And when you get to that point, you know you'll have something. The local people will know who is there, not the people from out of town. Because they want to be in Mobile when this happens. So they came from all over the country to be with us on the moon pie night. But we have this opportunity next year to take this event to another level. If we had a major ban for Thursday night to whet the appetite, Friday would be New Year, New Years. But if we had another major ban for Saturday, not going. They're going to stay. They'll be here. So we get... It's something we can work on to keep to be here, to put on an event unlike anything we have seen before. I'll tell you one thing. They didn't drop no pedicure in Pensacola. They canceled the event. They canceled that event over in Pensacola. The monster was in Mobile. They had to shut it down. They had fireworks, but they didn't drop nothing else because they were going to be embarrassed trying to compete with City of Mobile. Nobody by the central time zone can compete with us. We the baddest thing in the central time zone. So that's my announcement. Just want to thank everybody. Thank all our citizens in City of Mobile. Thank the people for behaving, coming out, and having a great time. It was a grand event. Looking forward to next year.
Mr. Davis? Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to start out by commending Councilman Richardson. The moon pie drop was his idea. He's had some great, great help over the years from the Downtown Alliance and from the City of Mobile and others. And to be commended, it was Councilman Richardson's idea. And there were a lot of naysayers back then. There were a lot of people who said it was a crazy idea, stupid idea, whatever pejorative adjective you want to put against it that was used on it. And if I, to tell you the truth, if I'd been sitting up here, I probably would have been one of those people. But he's proved all of the naysayers wrong, and it's a fabulous event. And everybody that helps put it on, as Councilman Richardson deserve congratulations and thanks. I am hosting a neighborhood meeting for the Landfair Yester Oaks neighborhood a week from today at five-thirty PM at the Holy Cross Lutheran Church at thirty-nine-hundred Airport Boulevard. This is primarily to discuss the plans, the master plan for Hackmire Park, which is a park located in this neighborhood. This master plan was developed after a charrette that was actually held at the park for those who live in the neighborhood and then wider in broader area of the city. And this, as I said, this meeting is primarily to discuss that master plan. We'll have Ms. Harden from Architectural Engineering and Ms. Smith, Parks Director, there to talk about that. I've also asked Chief Engineer, Mr. Amberger, to be there to talk about the status of the widening project on McGregor Avenue from Dolphin Street down Airport Boulevard, which is in the very, very early stages. But I know that's particularly interesting to those folks, particularly how traffic is going to be managed while that project is ongoing. And so Mr. Amberger will be there to discuss that. That's at five-thirty PM at the Holy Cross Lutheran Church, thirty-nine-hundred Airport Boulevard. Thank you, Mr. President.
Mr. Richardson? Thank you very much. On Thursday, January sixteenth, at the Connie Hudson Senior Center, there'll be a district-wide meeting. And the topic is public safety. I'd like to thank Chief Tease and Public Safety Director James Barber for confirming attendance. I look forward to having citizens coming out for questions, answers, and for information. I will be making robo calls, which normally are not something that people will really appreciate to their homes. But this is in place of sending postcards, which for the district would be thousands of dollars of discretionary funds. The robo calls are a lot more economically efficient, and it does get the information out. I've done this before, and I hope that people will play that call and take the information and then attend. We'll also do media outlet pieces, and it's been running in the District Six newsletter. If you do not get that, please contact my office, and I'll be happy to put you on the list for the district newsletter. That goes out every Friday. Also, would like to congratulate our council member, Richardson, who is the, I guess he's the father of the moon pie. I don't know how else to say it. But the godfather, that works too. But again, Happy New Year to everybody, and I hope it's healthy, happy, and all your goals, aspirations are achieved in 2020. Thank you.
Mr. Vice President?
Thank you, Mr. President. Looking at our agenda today, the council had passed two resolutions on here. This was dealing with the CIP, with Duval Street Park, and also Tremere Park. And next week, we're looking to also pass a resolution for a grant easement at Tremere Park for the Tremere Challenge Course, the only end of the challenge course in the city of Mobile. Excited about this project. Sort of all the great things that's going on in District Three. And I wanted probably a timeframe when this challenge course is going to be completed, and some other renovations at Tremere Park is going to be completed. Because we know that Easter is coming up and plan on having our annual Easter egg hunt, and it would be great to have it at Tremere Park. So in the next couple of weeks, I will be looking to see exactly the timeframe on the challenge course and the other improvements at Tremere Park and also at Duval Street Park to go ahead and announce our annual Easter egg hunt. Thank you, Mr. Vice President.
Mr. Williams?
Seems like we waited a long time for 2020. Doesn't feel much different. I will do this, though. We had a banner year last year. The expectation, if you listen to Airbus and to Ossil and to other manufacturing organizations, it looks like it's going to be an incredible year. Downtown's booming. We got a incredible council and capable administration. 2020 is just going to be incredible, and I just wish everybody a Happy New Year.
Mr. Williams?
Thank you, Mr. President. To piggyback on what you've already heard about what's ahead, we are definitely in the raw twenties now, and, you know, just great things ahead for everyone. I know in my district, there are a number of projects that are beginning very soon. One in particular that I've been talking about for the last however many years I have been on this council, going on fourteen, I guess it is fourteen now, Ziggler is finally going to start. In fact, I will be sending out a letter to all of the residents who live up and down Ziggler Boulevard, letting them know that the first phase of the project is set to begin. Initially, of course, it's more prep work. Signs will go up alerting motorists that roadwork is ahead. So you'll see the prep work again before you see the actual construction. But the first phase is from Schillinger right to About Cody Road. And then the second phase is Forest Hill to Athie. The Forest Hill to Athie will not start until about the spring or early summer. But this first phase from Schillinger to About Cody is the one that is set to begin. Signs should be going up if they're not already there today, alerting motorists to the work. So that's the big news. Ziggler widening is actually going to start hopefully this week. So sending out a letter to all the motorists again to let them know because, as in all these projects, there will be some traffic delays. And I just want to make sure everyone understands that. Another big project that we've been looking at and working toward is the fire station at Museum Drive. If you've driven by there, work is underway. They're still doing some more of the groundwork to get ready to begin actually seeing the walls come up. But it looks great. I'm really excited to see all of this work going on in the district. And like everybody else has said, Fred, what a great job, father of the moon pie. Way to go. The crowds look tremendous.
Thank you, Ms. Gregory. And I want to echo the sentiments of my colleagues in congratulating our senior member, Councilman Fred Richardson, on a great idea. The moon pie drop is an iconic Mobile institution at this point. And I'm just proud that it is hosted in its entirety in District Two. I don't know of another area of the city of Mobile that would be... No, I'm not. Fred Richardson is the father, godfather, stepfather, all of the fathers of the moon pie. I'm not trying to take any credit. All I'm saying is that I'm proud that it's held downtown Mobile. And all of us do have ownership in that. As Councilman Williams just said, downtown is booming. New restaurants, new entertainment venues. And I just believe this next decade is going to be an outstanding and transformative decade for the city of Mobile. It's an excellent time to be in leadership here in the city. We have issues, I don't know of any municipality that doesn't have them. But I would rather have that... have the set of facts and the circumstances we have than many other cities that I'm aware of. And so, again, Happy New Year to each and every one of you. Glad the moon pie drop was a great and successful event. We'll be holding a series of community meetings in the month of February. We'll have those dates to announce on next week. On next Tuesday at one thirty, I've been advocating for the demolition of the Josephine Allen Housing Projects pretty well since we started running into assuming the oath of office. When I go over to the Happy Hill Community, that's ninety percent of the conversation. When will those buildings be torn down? And I'm appreciative of the leadership of Ms. Simpson and Jamie Roberts. We have been working together to tackle this problem, and on next Tuesday at one thirty, we will have a press event to announce a timeline to actually begin the demolitions of those decrepit structures in that community. As I've said often from this day, is no community, no citizen should have to live amongst all of that funk and squalor. And I am happy that we're going to have a timeline. This council's already approved the nuisance abatement action. The bids hopefully will be in, and we'll be able to say affirmatively to that community, that most deserving community, that this plaguing problem that lasted, it started well before our tenure, because those buildings have been vacant probably eleven or twelve years at this point. We'll, we'll finally be able to give them some, some semblance of a timeline as to when those structures will be coming down. And so I'm extremely proud of that, extremely proud of another issue that's been long plaguing in Avocatown Community, lights at Kid Park. They said it couldn't be done, it shouldn't be done, the community did it, the community did want it. I've been out there where the parents have had to cut their headlights on in order to provide illumination. We have worked to find a solution to that problem, and hopefully we will vote on that item on, in next week's council meeting. And so progress is taking place all over the length and breadth, breadth of the City of Mobile, all over the district, all over District Two. I don't know of any area that's not getting better. Now, it may not be getting as, as, to the degree that you would want it and to the, to the timeline that you would want it, but it took time for us to get in the condition. It's going to take time for us to crawl out of it. But working together, the plan is working, and it is impacting neighborhoods, street by street, community by community. I want to end my comments by just offering our public condolences to our city attorney. He lost his brother. I'm not meaning to make emotional, rehashy feelings, but I want to acknowledge that he lost his brother, Reginald Woods, and we want him to know, you've been in our thoughts, and you've been in our prayers. Glad that your back and earth has no sorrow, that heaven can heal. And I, and I mean that sincerely. And we want to welcome you back and keep, keep on hanging in there. It'll get better with time, hopefully and prayerfully.
Mr. President, he was at the moon pie, he was at the moon pie drop.
Wonderful.
He had his family, he was there.
I'm happy to hear it. Those kind of events hopefully will take your mind, it won't replace, but it'll take your mind somewhere else. Hopefully, seeing the moon pie come down is something else to think about. This is a great new year, a great new decade. I'm excited about all of our possibilities. And any other announcements from members of this council?
Yes, Mr. President.
Mr. Vice President?
I also would like to extend my congratulations to Councilman Richardson and Events Mobile and, and others who had made this moon pie successful. We have Mr. David Clark, the CEO and President, this morning in our meeting of the Mobile Venture and Bureau. I would like for Mr. Clark, if possible, in the next couple weeks, if he can get with the Mobile of Downtown Alliance and see exactly what was, you know, the cause of the great attendance from this year at the moon pie drop. Was it because of the act, or was it because of, it was announced earlier this year? That would be something that we should, you know, some good information that we should know and everything.
I totally agree with you, Mr. Vice President.
Thank you.
Any other comments, Ms. Gregory? Like you might have something, no? Mr. Williams?
Oh, no, I wouldn't be funny. I thought maybe asking, any announcements from the administration?
Yes, that's I do want.
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor?
So I will challenge the city council, so meet me on Dolphin Street, where we all get on a scooter, a motorized scooter, and we'll all come down and, and I'll square, I'll be in the square. So y'all be thinking about that, and we'll set a time and a date for a media event, but in all seriousness, so for those, I'm not sure that I'd get many takers. But, but in all seriousness, the scooters, you know, showed up several days ago, and there's some questions about what are the rules, and the police department will be making sure that everybody knows the rules, and I'm, I'm not going to articulate all of them right now, but they are designed for only those who are eighteen years and older. You'd obey the rules of any motorized vehicle. If you come to a stop sign, you should stop. You should stay in your lane and not go the wrong way on a one-way street. No riding on the sidewalks. There will be a difference in motorcycles and these scooters, and that will not be required to wear a helmet to ride the scooter. But anyway, there's a lot of excitement, there were a lot of people riding scooters. We'll have a report probably in the near future about a company which is Mangacha. They'll give us feedback on the impact that they've had and what they see the future to be. But anyway, it is a cause of excitement, so if you haven't ridden a scooter and you've got your insurance paid up, I would suggest you go get on one, because they're a lot of fun. Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Ms. Gregory?
Mr. Mayor, I'll take you up on that challenge, but I do have one question. I've seen some, some of the video, and it looked like some of the scooter, people on scooters are going right down the middle of like Dolphin and some of these other streets. So, so I think getting the rules out as to where they are allowed or, or not is important.
Yes, they, MPD is working on that.
I have a question.
But I'm, I'm happy to take the challenge, Mayor.
All right. We have one taker. Is there another?
I'd be second.
Oh, now you're okay, that's three.
I am not afraid of a scooter.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
I am not afraid of a scooter.
Okay, we got four here, Ms. Rich?
Okay, I, I think the way, way we stop the scooters is in the entertainment district is the location where they can ride, and it's not supposed to be on sidewalks. That's, that's state law. Yeah, no on side. But can, can the county set a GPS that if they go outside of the entertainment area where they're supposed to be riding only, if, if they got the system? Because, I mean, didn't we read about some of them going through the Wallace Tunnel? I mean...
We'll find out.
I mean, it might be a way, because unless you're handing maps to people, which would be costly and a lot of litter, that might be something they could just, just shut them down if they're outside of the, the area where they can ride them.
You dodged a question, Bass.
Oh, am I riding?
Yes, we.
I'm riding.
Tell you, you're not.
If it's not raining, it's a certain day.
It should rise, it's going to rise.
Mr. Davis?
I'm provided with appropriate padding.
Appropriate padding.
You're going to stand up.
And a helmet.
You're not going to sit down on no scooter, you're going to stand up.
Yeah, okay, all right, we got six takers. All right.
Who would not ride?
We probably moved to second, any discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Meeting is adjourned.